Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
They moved.
Then moved in saying to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. First up is the 2025 NHD Regionals. Dean and Kayla Smith. Kayla Smith, sorry. Is the green button on?
Hey, I like tech.
Hey, you kind of got to keep it close so we can hear you.
Good evening, my name is Dean Smith and this is my 33rd year in Prosser, but about my 25th year working with National History Day. And my wife and I, my wife runs the club and we lead the National History Day program. It's a fantastic program that the students become the researcher, but they also decide what they're going to make, they decide how they're going to make it, they decide if they're going to work with a partner or not. It's very much student driven and basically my wife for the high school, Kyla, I'll let her talk in a minute, me at the middle school, we're just the coach and biggest fan, supporting them and trying to help them, but at our regional event at the high school about four weeks ago, we had about 62 students in the middle school and think about-
From Prosser.
From Prosser, oh yeah, there were a few hundred from other districts. And 17 of my students qualified to go on to state and four of them are here to show their projects in the high school.
I'm sadly at the time of the year when high school students are extremely busy, but I had nine of my 10 who went on, continuing on to the state level. Sadly, our one that didn't make it was because of us. We cleared the category and we had four and they only take three to the next level. So, but at the high school level, it is not in the classroom like it is with Dean over at Housal. They do it completely 100% on their own time, they don't get any school credit for it. And they just do a phenomenal job and I'm really, really proud and I have a feeling we have some national bound projects in and amongst the two of our schools again. So, and I just want to say thank you, I know several of you judged for us at Regionals, holding panels here in Prosser was something we've wanted to do for a long time and we just didn't have the opportunity until we had the new high school. And I don't know, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of between 700 people in the building and we got the nice compliment from the head of the state saying of all the Regionals, this one had the least amount of problems ever. We had one little tiny glitch with technology that was easy to fix and we had one little glitch with our registration, which was not something on our plate, it was on the state's plate. So, I just want to say thank you to those of you that donated the time and it means a lot to us to help see this program go forward because we see what it does for kids. I'll let you talk about your kids.
Absolutely, we have so many of you helped, so many community members and it was cool to see community members later on Facebook talking about how much they enjoyed it. That was really cool. So, I have three groups, four students who qualified for state and what I was thinking is that the two young ladies who did individual exhibits, if they could, maybe I could ask them a question, some non-pressure, but a little bit about their topic and maybe you could take a moment to see their wonderful exhibits and then I'd like to have the two young men who took first place in group documentaries show theirs, if that's okay. All right. So, Noel. Hello, I like this. It's kind of like power, I need this. You don't have to, you can wave, that's fine, I can talk about your project too. Noel is, this is her second year doing NHD and last year I was like, I'm very uncomfortable with exhibits, really, let's do documentaries, performances, she says, no, I want to do an exhibit and she was a person a while that went on to state and now she's going on to state again. Tell us about your project.
Okay, my project is about women in the national parks and their fight for being able to work in the national parks because for a long time they weren't able to, they couldn't do it, it was like, no, because it was mainly male dominated. And that changed during World War II and females, well, they've been in parks for a while, but not a plethora, but during World War II, they came in full force to take over the jobs of many men Rangers because they went off to war. So, that's mainly what my project is.
Awesome. Hello. I won't put it straight if you don't want to. Kylan is very first time doing NHD and she's also going to state with exhibit. You want to just say what your topic is or?
My topic is Seneca Falls and the woman who took responsibility to fight for women's rights. It's about the first women's rights movement that was held in New York and it just started like, it started ruling the women's like rights.
Awesome, and if you get a chance to look at these, I'd like to point out that teacher never tells the students what their projects are, not at all. And these topics, they found out there, but they, and it's really cool when your kids very quickly know way more than you do about your topic, that's very cool. Oh, what was the theme?
Rights and Responsibility.
Every, every year there's a different theme and the projects, whether they're ancient, 1960s, whatever, they all have to fit the theme. And this year's theme is rights and responsibilities and they had to show both rights and responsibilities. I don't know the best way to-
You want to take a few minutes and go look at it?
Yeah. So, on April, Saturday, April 26th, we have a bus picking up our group, 17 from the middle school, nine from the high school leaving at 4:00 AM. And because when we need to be, we need to be able to set up exhibits and everything and then probably finish Bellevue Middle School, Bellevue High School? I remember. Lake Washington High School and probably finish there about six o'clock and then we have a nice ride back home, so it's going to be a long day. I'm going to ask these gentlemen to introduce themselves and their project and that'll be our last thing to show you, thank you so much.
Yeah.
My name is Tarv Gupta.
I'm Inaka Timbade.
And we made a project on Brown v Board of Education and how Oliver Brown fought for educational rights for all children in America.
Yeah, he was able to end segregation and we thought a documentary would be a good way to convey it because of like, it would visually show the story and how it progressed and how it affected America.
In the last few years that we've done NHD, we've been to state three times and we've made a documentary in sixth grade and a website in seventh grade. We've learned a lot from our experiences and have been able to use our knowledge to create this documentary for you. So, enjoy, thank you.
Brown v Board of Education was a combination of court cases made by Black men such as Oliver Brown in the 1950s to challenge the constitutionality of school segregation. It argued that separate education could never be equal and it was the country's responsibility to grant colored people the same educational rights as whites. The outcome of the case completely reformed America's educational system, being one of the first steps to ending segregation as a whole and setting the stage for major civil rights movements throughout the country. After the Civil War ended in 1865, America was still struggling with the effects left by slavery, the most prominent being the segregation of whites and blacks. The Jim Crow laws were black codes reinstated to combat Reconstruction and can be traced back to the 1860s. Southern whites resented the Reconstruction period as under it, blacks received rights through the newly ratified 13th, 14th, and 15th amendments. The Jim Crow laws, after being created, began to dominate the American South, legalizing the segregation of whites and blacks. In 1896, the Supreme Court officially legalized segregation in a case called Pushevi Ferguson. The decision of this case established the doctrine separately equal. This allowed there to be separate facilities for white and colored individuals as long as they were deemed equal. However, this doctrine continued to allow racial inequality as education for colored children was often inferior in quality and resources.
We call them tall paper shacks. They were really wooden buildings with tall paper on the outside and a wood stove inside. The stoves had gotten big holes in them when they made fires in them, the hot coals would jump out, whoever sat behind the stove, it was your job to get the coals back in so the building wouldn't burn. And at the time, you know, when you flipped the coals back in, you think it's funny, but we could see that this was no, no condition for learning. And we knew that we deserved something better.
All of this discrimination motivated organizations such as the NAACP, National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, to reach out to colored parents who want to take a stand against school segregation. America had a responsibility to ensure the rights of its people, especially the equal education of all its citizens. These parents could not keep waiting for change, something had to be done. In the summer of 1950, schools in Topeka, Kansas were segregated based on race and ethnicity. When Oliver Brown's daughter, Linda Brown, was about to enter the third grade, her father tried to enroll her in Sumner Elementary School. Linda had been attending Monroe School, which was for colored children, but Sumner was exclusively for white children only. The journey to get to Monroe School was both hazardous and long for Linda. To catch the bus, she had to walk around two miles through an active train depot. If the bus arrived on time, she had to wait another hour outside the school in the cold. Sumner Elementary, however, was just seven blocks away.
Being a young child, when I first started the walk, it was very frightening to me. And then when winter time came, it was a very cold walk, I remember that, I remember walking, tears freezing upon my face because I began to cry because it was so cold and many times I had to turn around and run back home.
Oliver Brown went to Sumner Elementary to talk to him about possibly enrolling Linda into the school. After a long and heated discussion, the principal replied, although I am not opposed to integrate schools, the school board is and there's nothing I can do about it. After being rejected, Topeka's local NAACP approached Brown along with other black parents to join in action against the school board. All the parents were facing similar issues with their children's education. Either the schools their children attended were too far away from their home or too dangerous to reach. Along with this, schools for the whites and the colored were hardly equal. In an effort with the NAACP, the parents decided to sue and each of their cases were combined to form the case Brown v Board of Education. Oliver Brown and the other black parents want to challenge the constitutionality of school segregation as it took courage away from colored children who wanted an equal education. Brown v Board of Education argued that separate education could never be equal and it was the country's responsibility to grant blacks the same educational rights as whites. This responsibility, granted by the 14th Amendment of the Constitution, was to provide equal protection under the laws, a right promised to all citizens of the United States, including blacks. In December 1952, the Supreme Court first heard arguments for Brown v Board of Education. Many white and colored individuals waited in lines to see the hearing, but no conclusion was reached. During the court's recess, Chief Justice Vincent died and Chief Justice Warren was appointed. In December 1953, the court heard the case again and on May 17th, 1954, unanimously ruled segregation in schools was unconstitutional. The court said separate can never be equal and that segregation also violated the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment. Undoubtedly, one of the main impacts of Brown v Board of Education was that gave blacks equal educational rights by ending school segregation. Surely, schools being required to integrate would finally give blacks the equal education they had fought so hard for, right? America's responsibility to give these rights to colored people would no longer be neglected. Sadly, no. Unsurprisingly, the major societal changes met quickly with backlash and resistance. Protests from whites not wanting to integrate began, as well as even some schools shutting down in response to the ruling. In addition to this, many black teachers lost their jobs once schools reluctantly began integrating, we would not hire them. Fortunately, despite opposition from schools, integration slowly began to take place throughout America. With Brown v Board of Education shining a light on America's neglected responsibility to provide the rights listed in its own constitution, civil rights movements quickly began spreading throughout the country. With hope for desegregation in other areas of society, black Americans stared more bowels against the unconstitutionality of segregation and other violations of their rights. This is shown by the trend of the most major civil rights movements that directly followed the ruling of Brown v Board of Education. One of the major figures of the civil rights movement is Martin Luther King, who wrote and has safety published in 1969 that justice for black people will not flow into this society merely from court decisions, nor from fountains of political oratory. White America must recognize that justice for black people cannot be achieved without radical changes in the structure of our society. This showed that even 15 years after Brown v Board of Education, major civil rights leaders still focused on America's responsibility to provide equal rights for all its citizens. In conclusion, Brown v Board of Education, by ending the segregation of schools, changed the life of every American, showing that America had a responsibility to give colored people equal rights regarding education. This was not only a legal victory, but one of the greatest victories for the civil rights movement. This case was a powerful catalyst, igniting further efforts to end segregation in all aspects of community, allowing people to join the struggle for equality. With the landmark decision, the court case created a future for children to attend school together, free of segregation, and established a responsibility that America can no longer ignore, one that would expand the rights of all Americans into the coming future. America would have to accept that separate is never equal.
Yeah, great job, did it very well, putting that together. And thank you for sharing. Okay, next up, do we have anybody signed in? No? Blake, anybody online? Okay, we're going to go past that one. And moving on to student representative reports, Cammy here up first.
The one big thing happening in athletics right now is next Saturday, the 19th, is the 63rd Prosser Rotary Invite. That's all I have.
Alexandra?
Um, before we went on break, the food service had their micro greens little show during lunch. They showed off micro greens such as like broccoli and radishes, got students feedback on how they thought of it. And today we went over like what the students thought and what we can do going forward to try to promote eating more greens.
What was the perception?
I didn't get to see the whole thing, but from what I did see, students did like the radish and they did like the broccoli more when they were told that it was sweet.
Thanks Alexandra. Any questions for Cammy or Alexandra? Thank you. All right, moving on to discussion items, building reports, first up is Jesse Wilson, Keen River View.
Hi. Um, we're just, it's April and so that just means that we start kind of looking at what next year's all about, so bringing our leadership teams together and starting with that process. So, we're doing that, right before break, my teams did some big, big data dive and just kind of planned to give our last final push on the last part of the school year, so looking at our ERLA data and our NEAL data and getting kids where they need to be at so that we can get them pushing until the last part of the school year, so they're working hard on that right now. And then going into springtime, just lots of events, we have Reptile Man tomorrow, Grizz's Farm on Friday, and then May we'll do a family picnic, Kindergarteners will do a concert, can't remember the date on that one. Our first grades working on the Jungle Book with Princess Theater right now and then just all the other end of the year activities, Play Day and all that stuff the last week of school, so that's all. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Actually, would you please share about your evacuation drill and the time response, please?
Oh yeah, we just had safety and security, so we did an evac drill from obviously in the building to across the street to the park and we had everyone evacuated and accounted for within four minutes, so it's pretty fast for our littles.
Good job.
Yeah, so we're excited about that, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Next up is Director of Migrant Bilingual, Eric Larets. Eric, are you online? And I guess we'll move, keep moving on. Uh, next up is Review of Policy 5281, Disciplinary Action in Discharge.
So, the first thing I want to talk about is this is a discussion item, we're looking at all of our policies based on age, right? And so if you look at this, I have a printed out copy. If you really wordsmith it, there's very little word change, a lot of his format, listing, taking out a lot of the paragraph idea, listing things by items. And so I'm open for discussion to our staff members that are here and are listening, there is no major changes on, for example, adding something to the list that you could receive discipline on or anything like that, does that make sense? It's more in formatting. So, WAASDA, Washington School Directors Association, has a legal team that reviews our and creates what's called a model policy and as either legal cases are done or things have been done, they have it reviewed. So, what, this is one that is, I hate to use the word used a lot because that means it sounds like people in jail, I don't mean that, but it's a big reference that we have to. So, Sean Mumford, our legal attorney, has looked it through, these are the pieces and so it's here for discussion and open for any comments or questions and that's what I've got for you.
Questions for Kim? I have one.
Okay.
Under the non-disciplinary dismissal.
It let me, are you really looking in the blue? In the one that's got all the-
You can even go to the draft.
Okay. Okay.
It says for non-represented and classified employees.
Let me get their non-discip- Okay.
And sort of certificated administrators may be subject to non-disciplinary dismissal or behaviors such as, but not limited to, providing proof of vaccination or refusal to obtain a medical or religious accommodation. Why is that the only thing in there?
That's a very good question, I don't have an answer, so that would be something I would have to research for you.
And is that typical for-
We don't flex that depth.
As well? As well?
We don't collect them.
Then I think it should be taken off of the policy.
And I'm looking over my shoulder to Selena. We probably want to research that and ask where that comes from.
Yeah, there must be a reason.
There must be a reason, but we need to answer the question and/or remove it at your request. Um, but I want to know the answer to the reason, and then, um, I can send that out to you as, as an email and as a do not reply all with the answer, and then somebody could say, please move forward with the removal. But, um, this is one of those pieces that when they give us something as a model policy, then it's kind of.
Right.
I'm wondering if this went back to the COVID situation and the vaccination piece. I'm wondering if it's leftover. It wasn't really required then.
It wasn't even required then, though.
I mean, so I don't know. So I'm gonna have to do some research as to why. I've got a big start there.
Thank you. That was the only question I had. Anybody else? I think we could move forward with, uh, once we get the right information.
And I will bring the, um, next version, but I will notify you ahead of time. It's like, but I will answer it publicly at the start of the next first reading.
Okay, thank you.
Have a question. Uh-huh. Afraid to ask because I'm afraid to answer. Uh, but maybe it's one of those, um, ones that we don't know why it's in there. So back on, um, page two, under all the alphabetized bullets. It says in the event that allegations or charges are made against.
Which letter?
Oh, it's just below that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So after the last, after Z. In the event that allegations or charges are made against a staff member for misconduct with minors, the superintendent may contact CPS for evidence regarding whether the staff member is an adjudicated or admitted perpetrator of child abuse or neglect. Is that not something for the background check would tell us already?
Initially, but not necessarily. So I'm in a, because my friend who's here has been here a long, long time. Um, uh, her initial background check, but not something unless it came up in something in her thirty years, there was reason to check it again.
Sure. Thank you for clarifying that.
So we, so.
It's not likely that would be a secret if something like that happened with somebody, but I mean, we don't go back and do a background check, like periodically, yeah.
But typically, this is something we would have already known about a staff member.
Oh, before we hired them, for sure.
Yeah. So if it's something that way, or so we have Office of Professional Practice, we have our background checks and those kinds of logs. That decision to hire that person initially would be either pro or con. But like I said, if it was something that was going on and there hadn't been reason for us to be notified then, that would be a step that we would go through.
Uh, thanks for, uh, looking at that. I, it gave me another question. Um, I lost all my notes during my computer and it's not turning on. And, um, under U, it says the use of habit-forming drugs without pharmaceutical prescription. We all get that part. Uh, but there are pharmac- suitable, there are prescriptions that, uh, for drugs that may render your, your poor judgment or incoherent. How would that be handled as part of this? And would it make sense to? I don't, I don't even know how you write the language for it, but would it make sense to add something like that?
So, um, if an employee has that type of medication, they're supposed to inform their supervisor that they could have something that it, you know, impacts them. I mean, it could be something that like, oh, my medicine might make me pass out or something like that, but, um, if that were the case, that would be more like thinking somebody was under the influence of something, which would maybe lead to someone noticing that. But it does, um, I mean, you could be prescribed something that would not really allow you to work. But I would hope that the doctor would say you shouldn't be at work until you are off this medication, but I mean, we don't necessarily know those things.
Right.
I read that in using the prescription drug without a prescription. Use of a habit-forming drug without pharmaceutical prescription by a doctor of medicine. Each of the Vicodin.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that means nothing.
Yeah.
Right, and I get that part, but I'm just saying if you, if you had a Vicodin or whatever, whatever drug that, you know, you always see.
Prescribed, right.
Prescribed that says don't run heavy machinery or drive, you know, drive less. You know what I mean? So if, if, if.
Yes, things that I've taken medicines says may cause drowsiness.
Right.
I mean, good medicine, I mean, but prescribed medicines may say that, and so it may impede my operate or, you know, I'm sitting at my desk going, can't hold my eyes open.
So I think that, so I agree, if, way I'm getting to it is if, if you do have a prescription, but say you're not supposed to drive machinery, but you do, say, you get on a lawnmower, drive a, a school vehicle, something bad happens.
In that case, they, they, they should, I mean, that would be, so there's a fine line.
Policy, okay.
No, no. And if an employee, say an employee had a prescribed medication and came to work maybe under the influence of that and wasn't behaving in their normal fashion, it wouldn't be the same kind of situation as this. So.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, um, yeah, this kind of brought up, um, question, um. So kind of along these lines, and I'm by no means am I condoning the use of illegal drugs, but looking at the, the use of alcohol beverages on district premises or district-sponsored activity, um, this discussion about drugs kind of led, led me to that line, um. I guess what people are doing on their own time um, shouldn't be a far away offense, right? That would kind of fall alongs of the alcohol not on premise.
I'm gonna pick on myself. I, I choose to have an adult beverage and and I receive a DUI leaving a facility. Um, that would be something, if you look at my contract, um, on professional conduct, right? And how I represent the school district. So that could fall under that piece. It would definitely relieve me from driving any district vehicles or so on and so forth. Whether it relieves me from my duty as a superintendent. And the other part would be the decision of the board. And so, um, I think we also have some responsibility to the community and the students in which we serve that if it's impeding, potential to impede what you're representing, it may come into play differently than um, I can't think of an example right now, but I mean, like, go to a Seattle Mariners game and you're a baseball coach who get in trouble at the Mariners game. I don't know if that's a direct reflection of you as a coach. Does that make sense what I'm trying to say? So I think it would depend on, but yet what you do in your first time does not necessarily directly impact your day job.
But this policy does say, um, who conduct themselves on or off the job, um, in ways that affect the, that affect their effectiveness on the job. So if there's some sort of like issue that seems to be coming up in the public, it's creating some sort of disruption to the learning environment, those kinds of things. So it is possible in this policy that your behavior outside of your actual work time could impact your employment.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions?
That same line that Brian brought up, uh, confused me a little bit when I read it because it said, um, I mean, I get no use of alcoholic beverages on district premises, and then it says, or add a district-sponsored activity off district premises. And I was wondering, like, are there scenarios where that happens? Like you're at a district-sponsored event somewhere else, not a school, and there's alcohol being provided.
I'm gonna use when I go to a state conference. I'm off a certain property. I am representing the Prosser School District when I'm there. And there's five superintendents. It's ten o'clock at night. Somebody says, let's go have a drink down at the bar. Being very transparent. My behavior there is a direct reflection of me as a superintendent. I'm not saying I can't have a drink. I'm just saying my behavior there, or if I get in trouble, that is a direct reflection of my, how I represent the Prosser School District. And so, I don't know, the hotel says, sorry, Ms. Casey. You have been loud and obnoxious at three AM. You are leaving our facility. That is a black mark for the Prosser School District. You, I don't think you would want my, that behavior for your superintendent, right? I'm just saying that as an example of an off-different district property that's a direct reflection of my job.
Yeah, I suppose it's okay because it just says that behavior, they may pause, right? So I guess what I was worried about was like, we're not saying you can't go have that drink at ten o'clock.
Nope. Okay. And I think for everybody who's listening, especially if there's students listening, whatever, as a, as an adult over the age of twenty, it's called age of majority. I have that, right? But I have a responsibility for the role that I'm playing, even off when I'm not a superintendent, right? Um, I go to the Whiskey and Beer Fest in Prosser, right? That doesn't mean I can't have an adult beverage, but it does say I have a responsibility to our community to behave in a certain way. Thanks.
Any other questions, students? Right, thank you. Uh, moving on to the review of policy one thousand, legal status and operation.
This one's pretty cut and dried.
Any questions on this one?
I have, I have a comment, and I realize this is the model policy and school district. We didn't draft it, but this the S and state of Washington should always be capitalized in that instance. And just in general, whoever wrote this hates the English language. It's just painful to read. But maybe we could make those corrections.
And when we bring it to it first, I, so I.
I believe they're written by an attorney for WASDA.
Well, they, no.
Right.
Yeah, right. Um, so what I will always ask is, it is hard. So if, when we bring you the first one, right after we bring it in a draft form, but as first, we really do like you to be our critical friend, and if you see those things, we would like to make them before we bring them to you for a second.
Any other questions on this one? Are you good to move this forward?
Thank you. We will work on the spelling and potential punctuation.
I'll give you a red line.
Okay. Actually, you can give that to Selena.
All right, next up is action item, uh, number one, out-of-state travel request for boys and girls basketball to Post Falls, Idaho. Hello?
Logan, uh, Toby's not here tonight, but I'm here representing boys and girls basketball. And we have, uh, out-of-state tournament planned for June twentieth to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho. So we are asking for your approval to travel to Coeur d'Alene with our, uh, boys and girls basketball programs in June. If you have questions, please ask them.
Do you have the fundraise for the whole trip?
Yes, we've, I mean, we fundraise all through our season and all through our summer, last summer, this season. We'll fundraise again this summer, next season. So we just turned in our budget and everything this week, so we, uh, should be good to go with that.
Any other questions?
Is this replacing Oregon or?
Yes, so it's similar to what we've done before at the Oregon coast, but the tournament last year, if you all remember, we got approval to go there. And then the girls tournament was, uh, not what we thought it was going to be, so we made plans to do this one together this year instead.
Nice.
Any other questions? I moved to approve out-of-state travel for the boys and girls basketball teams at Post Falls, Idaho.
A second?
Been moved in second in, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next up is out-of-state travel request for Hosa to Nashville, Tennessee.
Hello, I'm Mackenzie Lopez. I'm the host of Future Health Professionals, um, advisor with the high school. And this year, we at State had three students who qualified for the International Leadership Conference in, um, Nashville, Tennessee, Tennessee in June. And so I'm seeking your approval to take those three students, as well as myself and apparent chaperone to Nashville for those dates, June seventeenth through twenty-second. And if you have any questions, let me know.
Do you have the funds to go or you feel funded?
We have just about, we're almost done. We're waiting on a hospital, uh, letter donation, and then we'll be good. Yeah.
What are the topics that they, they qualified for?
So these three did a performance, uh, in the public health category. And their topic this year was the epidemic of loneliness that's sweeping the young adult population. And they got second at state, um, in this event out of, uh, over forty kids in Washington State that competed. And so they get to go do their performance. We get to figure out how to ship all of their props to Nashville, which is gonna be fun time. Uh, but yeah, they get to go do their performance there, um, among, uh, international. It's a global thing. It's not just in the United States, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I moved to approve out-of-state travel for Hosa to Nashville, Tennessee.
A second.
It's been moved in second in, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Good luck. Uh, next up is a consultant service agreement with Kyle Yetter.
Hello again. Uh, consultant agreement form for Kyle Yetter for our middle school track meet, which is May thirteenth, and it's six hundred dollars, and I'm requesting if we can use him for his timing services for our meet. Any question?
Questions for Jackson?
Before I leave, though, just want to let everyone know our C team beat Grandview in a shootout. It was epic. It was five-four. That's why I was a little bit late.
Well, that's exciting. Well, I moved to approve the consultant service agreement with Kyle Yetter. Been moved in seconded, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Jackson.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is the consultant service agreement for Prom twenty-twenty-five.
Hi, I'm Lisa Martin, and I, uh, and this, this is Mrs. Vanagraff, and we are the supervisors for Prom this year. And so we're here seeking your approval to use our venue and vendors that are part of your pocket. Um, Prom will be hosted on May third this year at Wine Country Gardens. And then part of the pocket is, um, our DJ, uh, the photo booth, and then also
the vendor and photographer.
Any questions?
Any questions?
No, but I would like to commend you for keeping it local. I really appreciate that.
That's important. We, we're happy to be able to support local, and also we are thankful that, um, our local venue, Wine Country Gardens, they did give our students a discount. So they do have a healthy budget in their ASV funds that, but our, it's our goal also to be respectful of the fact they're gonna be seniors next year, right? So we don't want to blow their whole budget. So, uh, we're thankful to them and our photographer and some of these other groups who are working with us to help. And we hope it's gonna be a wonderful evening for our guests.
Any other questions?
I moved to approve the consultant service agreement for Prom twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
Been moved in second in to approve the consultant service agreement for Prom twenty-twenty-five, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next up is a twenty-five, twenty-six student calendar.
It's a little bit later than it has been. Um, student calendars are probably one of the most tenuous, for lack of a better word, things, challenging things that we do. One, we, um, coordinate. One, we, um, coordinate things like TRITech. So we work with the Kennewick School District who manages TRITech. We try and be respectful of our neighboring districts. So if a person lives in one district and works in a different, excuse me, lives in one city and works in a different district, so far, so. Um, this was a challenge, um, to do that. And then I'm, I'm just gonna share with you in case anybody's listening. The, um, Grandview School approved their calendar last night at their school board meeting, which is the same week in case that comes up. The Pasco and Richland School Districts are the next week. Pennewick's is this week, the one that we're using because of TRITech. Um, and that's the other piece. Jackson's no longer here, but we also look at the impact on our spring athletes. Um, and try and coordinate as close we can. Practices are sometimes optional versus if we get too many. Then they don't ever really get a break with their family or something like that. So we try and take all those into consideration. So the PEA, the teachers group have approved this calendar and I'm bringing it to you today.
Any questions?
I do, by the way, Selena did that fancy formatting. This is our first time of using all these colors and things, so.
Beautiful.
Um, Kim, I mentioned this to you before this year. I think it's unusual to take the entire week of Thanksgiving off. I don't think there are any neighboring districts that do that. And until this year, we didn't do it either. Um, personally, I mean, maybe, maybe it can't be changed at this point, but I think those, um, extra two days probably be better used somewhere else, whether it's like a midwinter break around Presidents or, um, starting later or ending earlier in the year, but.
So I wish our PEA was here. Um, Deanna and I can kind of tell you that story. Um, we tried it last year and boy, we got some like. So if you remember.
Before it happened, it was either loved or hated.
Right? And so if you remember right, one of my commitments was we were going to stop half days before vacations, the cost of the subs. So when we went to the, to them, we were like, we're not having a half day on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving and we're not doing the half day before winter break. And so it came about that we're gonna try the whole week off, which a couple of years ago, Sunnyside had.
Yeah, there were several districts that did it and that's where that idea I think came from.
And so that was kind of how it happened. Then they initially catch us, no, we're, we're going back to just Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. And then.
Several of their members spoke out saying they liked the week off, so they proposed.
They proposed that and that's, okay, it has happened. It is in the PEA contract that it's a joint venture. The other thing to note here is the sixth of March is a snow day. If we, I mean, if we don't use it, it's an unused snow day, which is the Friday of state basketball. So that we can possibly try and save some substitute costs on that.
Well, in the future, I think it'd be great if we could renegotiate that.
Well noted.
I have a question when it comes to the first day of school for, uh, TK and Kinder. Um, it starts on the Friday before, uh, Labor Day. And my que, does that even make sense? I mean, if, if, uh, instead of going and waiting till Tuesday, it would fall in.
Uh, it's because there's only, so first thing is, the reason they start later is because nobody can handle starting TK Kinder and everybody else on the same day in elementary building, okay? It's, it's, Jesse's not here anymore, but it is all hands on deck the first day.
I can imagine.
And then on the day that TK and Kinder start, it's like all hands on deck plus like, uh, from the district office, we all, we all go help, so. But there's this only a certain number of days and I think believe that it's three, so you have to start that day. And so it is kind of a soft start for them though. Get to go, they're exhausted, they go home, rest for a few days and start over on Tuesday.
Then the chaos starts all over on.
Then you, yes, but then.
About a week. So I, I don't know if you remember this, but our administrative support staff, we almost closed the office. It's all hands on deck. We all go.
I believe you enjoyed that time last year, but that was the first day of school. You better come back for TK day this time.
It was chaos.
Organized chaos.
Organized chaos. It was fun, but.
Jason worked really hard finding those lunch tickets for those kindergartners and TK. It was, it was, it was a thing. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Does this need to be approved then? I moved to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six student calendar. It's been moved in second to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six student calendar, students? It doesn't matter because you're not gonna use it.
And they're like, I don't care.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the professional agreement for the professional engineering service for Prosser School District Natural Hazard Assessment.
I don't know. Andy, are you on? I don't believe so. I can tell you about this, but I'm just giving him the opportunity. Um, so. I, this is one of those that I'm gonna try and keep a really straight face. We have to have a seismic plan and it is a state requirement. And so it's, I don't know, seven thousand, whatever.
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred and then. It's, it's us pass through money. It's not something that comes out of our budget. We have to do it. There's no if, ands, or buts. And so we do it, we pay them, they come and do the testing. Our meet sure our buildings meet the requirements and then we submit it to the state of Washington.
They do that when we built the new school?
You have to do them every so many years. So we, I, I don't know they did it. Let's just pretend they did it. Two years before the building. I don't know what the rotation is and now it's our turn up again. So of the two hundred ninety-five districts, you're on a rotation of every seventh year or every tenth year.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any questions?
No, that was my question.
So that's, I, I'm happy to say that's why it's like fifty-five hundred, because the buildings are of a certain age, that they had certain requirements. I think if you were in a district where your buildings were older and had other requirements, right, then your, I don't wanna say your evacuation plan, but your plans, your sustainability plans may be very different than if we didn't have the buildings.
Any other questions? Um, I'll move to approve the agreement for the professional engineering services for Prosser School District Natural Hazard Assessment.
A second.
Been moved in second in, uh, student? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the first reading of policy fourteen thirty, audience participation.
The only difference that's presented to you is we did change it to twenty-one minutes instead of twenty. So we now have good math in our, in our agenda or in our policy.
Everybody better use their full three minutes. It's gonna really mess.
That throws it off. Yeah. Any questions on this policy?
I'll move to approve the first reading of policy fourteen thirty, audience participation.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the first readings, reading of policy fourteen thirty, audi- audience participation, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the first reading of policy fourteen twenty, proposed agenda and consent agenda.
So there's really no difference than what was presented here. Um, I do wanna talk about something and for people who are, are regular, um, followers of our board meetings. Um, you'll notice that the title of the line says first reading of policy fourteen twenty, but when you look at the supporting materials, it's policy and then a procedure. School boards approve policies. Um, district administration create the procedures to be able to follow the policies. So we always submit the procedures so people have access to them, so they know what they say, but our board is approving policy, not procedures.
Thank you. Any questions on that policy? Student?
I move to approve first reading of policy fourteen twenty, proposed agenda and consent agenda.
A second.
It's been moved in second to approve the first reading of policy fourteen twenty. Students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the first reading of policy six one one five, information security.
So I see something here and I'm going to, I'm opening this up. It says six one one five, but it says six five five one down on the policy. Can I have just a moment to see where the error is so I can address the error? I believe it is a typo in the heading.
It's supposed to be six one one five?
Uh, in the, in number nine where it says six one five, it should be six five five one. In actual, not in the policy itself, on our agenda.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
The policy is correct. I just wanted to make sure before I spoke which one was.
Well, it was interesting to see that something fell through the cracks two years ago.
There was a lot going on August twenty-three.
So reading this, um, Sean, I see you had a bunch of notes in there for changes? Or questions, concerns?
What is in the board packet, I believe, included the red line. Those policies actually come from ESD one twelve out of Vancouver. Uh, we really mimic those. However, their policies were wrote for an ESD. I massaged them to be relative to our district.
So Sean, let's take just a minute to explain the organization that's gonna help us and the different pieces. Can you just kind of share that, like what we talked about in my office?
Yeah, that'd love to. So, uh, where the, the, the whole point behind those policies and procedures are really so that we've got a guideline on how to, uh, to manage our network, how to manage access to our network. How to manage who has access to what, uh, when it comes to our vendors that VPN into our network as well as staff. Uh, contractors that come into our district. Uh, there's one there for PCI compliance. I have to by law have something, uh, because we take credit cards at the high school. And while we take them all throughout the district now, uh, so that's really covering our basis there when we do our PCI compliance every year. Uh, we have a policy or a procedure to back up how we handle those transactions.
Like can't open the, your notes now that I'm on this thing. Um, but I know you had some notes and I, I'm gonna just go off of memory, uh, cause I don't have my computer, but now there's notes within the document. Um, can you get them to open up?
They don't open up mine either.
On the iPad? Well, they opened on my computer and.
They probably did, yes.
Um, and I think you had some good comments. I, I'm not gonna be able to remember what they were, but I think some of them were language driven. Um, or word driven or wordsmith or, or something like that. Um, should we have those? I mean, they seem valid to me, but I don't know.
I'll be super honest, I did that two years ago.
Do you remember what they were?
I mean, I reviewed it when I took it to Kim to put it back on the, on the document or back on the agenda.
See, I'm, I'll try here. So I'm in the drafts policy and after number four and the, of the guiding principles on the first page. Sean, this has a comment that she feels like that por- portion on information privacy belongs in a separate policy. Is the first comment. Second comment is under security procedures, uh, the bullet number one. Um, and it says, I think that it's wordy and she didn't like the phrase likelihood. Um, in the fourth bullet in that same area where it says employee tools. Uh, she says we are not large enough to need multiple tools. I don't know if that's changed in the last two years, but it could have. Uh, and there's a dot on employee responsibilities. It says, uh, that the reference to an international security standard is unnecessary and requiring us to address these areas in our procedure looks, it locks us into a format we don't need. And then lastly, on the legal references, um, she just wanted to make sure that was, uh, evaluated for the correct content. Does that bring everything back to Sean?
Thank you.
Perhaps we should postpone this to our next.
Yeah, maybe.
I, yeah, I would think if we could put or at, figure out what the, if the language is correct and some of your edits and comments and. Um, I, I guess if it's.
I'd be happy to. How would you like me to bring that back to you?
I would make the corrections you're suggesting.
Yeah.
Okay.
The yellow dots are fancy. We haven't had that before.
Nice.
We waited a couple of years. I think we can wait a, a week.
Yeah.
I think that's probably just fine as well.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm gonna move to take, uh, postpone this to our next meeting.
Second.
Oh. Shelby on it? Alright, thank you. So I made a motion to postpone, uh, the first reading of policy six five five one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is the second final reading of policy sixty-seven oh two wellness.
No changes since our last meeting.
Move to approve the second final reading of policy sixty-seven oh two. It's been moved in seconded to approve the final reading of policy sixty-seven oh two, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, moving on to the second final reading of policy thirty-two forty-one, student discipline. Not good. There's nothing changed, right?
There are no changes since our last meeting. I'm sorry.
I moved to approve the second final reading of policy thirty-two forty-one, student discipline.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve the final rea- final reading of policy thirty-two forty-one, students? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, next up is resolution, uh, zero five two five, declaring surplus technology.
Pretty straightforward. Do you have any questions about anything on it?
Lot of surplus.
There is, it should be our last batch of surplus from all the moving that has gone on. Uh, if you remember, well, I don't remember what happened yesterday sometimes, but a year ago, we had a really large batch of surplus that went as well. Um, this should be the final piece to that. After that, it should go back to pre-build type surplus.
There's two BCRs on it.
This is also part of the continuation of the emptying of the storage units, emptying of locations, all of that. There's just legal policies that we have to do, legal processes, excuse me, that we have to do and cleaning and destroying hard drives. And there's different pieces like that and it's just very time consuming.
There is, I don't know, I wanna say a hundred and twenty of those desktops that are on there I got from Richland High School. Before COVID, when we bought everybody laptops. So that's a big chunk of it too, and it's just been in storage since then.
Um, I'll move to, oh, is there any questions? Sorry. Question. I moved to approve resolution zero five two five, declaring surplus technology.
A second.
Been moved in second to pr- approve resolution zero five two five, declaring surplus technology. This is a roll call vote. Students, begin. Alexander, you again? Uh, Brian?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
I too will vote aye. The motion carries. And Michelle stepped out for just a second. So we're gonna move on to vouchers. Any questions on vouchers?
Kind of a lighthearted thing as you're looking through your notes or whatever. You like how we're spending less money?
Yes, I do.
Delise is really glad when I quit spending money. Or when we quit spending money.
Anybody have any questions, students?
You don't have a question?
Nope, I don't.
Okay.
I can make a motion to approve vouchers and payroll.
It's been moved in second to approve vouchers and payroll, payroll, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next, uh, that concludes our action items. Next up is our consent agenda, uh, consent agenda items. Uh, one through three. Then moved in second to approve, approve the consent agenda, students. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And that concludes all the action items for tonight. Moving on to reports. Alicia, up first.
Okay, um, I am doing February financials. Um, and I emailed them all to separately today too, because I was a little late in getting these, uh, submitted. Um, so it's, I mean, it's not a secret where we're at financially. Um, three point nine one fund balance is not great. Um, however, it's a lot better than we were last month. Um, and if we look at February of twenty three, twenty four. You're operating at a three, three point four three fund balance at this time last year. Um, a lot of that has to do with the apportionment advancement that we got from the state. Um, and that also has to do with our increased expenditures in the month of February because we played catch up. So you can see, um, M S O Cs were around two hundred thousand dollars for a few months and then they skyrocketed to eight. Um, because we got to pay all of our bills and employees and all that great stuff. Um, so, uh, we are still on track to come in under budget. Um, as you can see, we're at forty nine point two six percent of expenditures. Um, and we're halfway through the year. So we're, we're coming in under, under, under what we predicted. Hopefully we can, can keep that momentum through August.
I have one question on the, um. The general fund. Financial statement.
Hmm.
When I look at the expenditures for the balance of the year, um, as a percent.
Yes.
Um, you have regular instruction, special ed and vocational ed all in that. Upper eighties, low, upper nineties. Are the, are you saying there? Is there potential that we could keep some of that money as far as savings on our expenses? I know summer is already.
You're talking as in like the actual fund balance report. As if, if we're going to spend all of it.
Right.
Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Um, well, that, that's a great question. Uh, C T E, we don't have to spend all of it. We have to spend a certain amount. Um, and then that gets carried over. Um, so this year he had a small carryover. Um. And then with the state and federal grants, we want to spend those. That's, that's a wash. And so if we don't spend all of them, we lose that. We, we can lose some of that money next year.
Okay.
Um, that goes with transportation. So transportation, if we don't spend all of what the state allocates us. They can dock us the year after because we. Per se. Um, so we need to make sure that some of these programs, we are, we are spending so we don't lose money next year.
So if I look at regular instruction, we're sitting at ninety nine point two three percent. Right? I'm on the very, your very first.
Yes, but that includes incumbents.
Right. But we still have a balance of a hundred and seventy five thousand. So is that saying that we have a potential to not spend that a hundred and seventy five thousand by the end of this, this year? Okay.
And these, on the program expenditures. We, for regular instruction, it's, it's a little bit different. Um, for sped, a- again, we, we have to spend all of that. Vogue, we have to spend all of that. Um, but it, it intermixes. So like the support services. That includes ninety seven hundred, which is district wide, which also includes, it's all general.
Okay.
So we still have one million dollars to spend in that.
And we have to spend it?
We do, we do not have to spend that, no. That's, that's all a portion of it.
Okay.
And so our goal is to have the program monies spent and not spend.
General.
General.
So we can carry forward and increase our fund balance continuously.
So, um, a couple of state and federal programs are a hundred, there's a couple that are a hundred percent carryover, title two and, um. Title three, my, the migrant are a hundred percent carryover. Uh, lap is ten percent, title one is fifteen percent. Um, and then some we have to spend them all, but some of them have a little bit of carryover. So it gives you a little bit of cushion, which for us. I know that they would like me to spend it all. I would like to have some carryover because I know next year we're going to lose money again. So. Uh, because of our enrollment and because of our, um, yeah, poverty level and process.
So C T E is going down next year also. And so you'll probably see Rick try and be more conservative this year and not spend as much as of his money so he can carry it forward to next year. So he's not eating into the general.
Why would C T be going down for next year?
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
Just start. Other questions for Delise?
Delise?
Thank you. Good, moving on. Deanna?
I'll be quick and brief. I was on vacation for part of the past two weeks. So, uh, we did, uh, that our Witstran principal interviews. Uh, that's still in process. Kim will probably talk more about that. And, uh, we did get, um. Today, moving forward, there's a new high school and beyond plan format called school links that the state is adopting. Um, for all districts to use. So if you have a student that's been through the high school, you've seen high school beyond plan before. So this will be a new platform and it's, it's required in twenty six, twenty seven, but we opted in for twenty five, twenty six. So that we could learn how to use it. And it starts actually at the middle school. They have to, uh, start by eighth grade, but they can start as early as seventh grade. And then it rolls on with them up and through, up through high school. So there'll be, um, there's a lot, there's more learning for us to do on that for sure. But that's it for me.
Questions for Deanna?
Deanna.
Deanna. Yeah, you're up.
So as you know, I always give you a one pager. It doesn't mean that I need to talk through all of this. I just like to always touch on, on the Prince, uh, Witstran principal search. Um, they did round one. Deanna was in charge of that. They had two groups. Deanna can kind of tag to me on this.
She's going to cough. So, um, we had one group that had parents and administrators, one group that are teachers, paras, um, office folks. And then, um, and so they did two different interviews and then, uh, Kevin Gilman took them on a tour of the building. Uh, kind of just have an informal discussion. So. Now.
So tomorrow, each group chose their top one and two. And so I want everybody to understand tomorrow, they're doing a one-on-one, or not, a small private interview with myself and Kevin Gilman. Just because we're at this point of the piece doesn't mean we will or will not hire a, a principal. We have many options available. We can say, oh my gosh, here's the next principal. Or we can say. I, I, I'm going to come to you as a board and say, I think we need to reopen this, right? Or we, we're gonna, we had a really good pool. We had twenty one candidates. Maybe we didn't interview the right people. So we're gonna go for a second set of interviews. We, Deanna explained, we're early in the principal piece. A lot of them are starting to post, but they don't close them or they do different things. So we have to find the right person. Uh, we've heard from different members and different people, meaning members of different union or bargaining groups. And we've heard from all different people. So just because we do these interviews and, um, I do a private inter- or a small interview with them. Doesn't mean we're gonna necessarily, I may be bringing you a, a recommendation to hire. Or I may say, we're going to go back and we're going to interview some more. Because these were great people, but I don't know if it's the right fit for our community. Next thing is, um, we started our negotiation with Prosser Coaches Association. We meet on Friday, first round two. Uh, we've met with the P S E. We've, um, had our first meeting. We meet, um, on the eighteenth. Um, principal negotiation meeting is, um, first is complete. The second meeting is Friday afternoon. I want to talk about budget this evening. Um, I, I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, but I think it's important to spend some time. There's a couple of things. Right sizing is a word that I'm, or a, I don't want to say a catchphrase, but a phrase that I'm going to use. When you're decreasing enrollment, which means decreasing revenue, you have to right-size the system to fit. With the amount of money that we have coming in. One thing that was possibly, um. Maybe misconstrued, I guess, would be, when I said keeping Prosser people working in Prosser. I think people were thinking I meant, like, if you live in Prosser, we're going to keep you. But the idea was. That if you're employed by the Prosser School District, our goal is to keep you in, working for us. It wasn't necessarily, if you live in Richland, you don't get a job because you don't live in Prosser. That was not the intent of that statement. The other piece that's important there is. Um, I always use Deanna because she's always my shoulder partner here, but. Deanna may have taught in a per certain position for a long time and now we're having to right-size. And Deanna may have to teach in a different. Position or different building or in a different something to be able to. That adage of keeping Prosser employees working in the Prosser School District. And so we want to make that really clear. The other piece that we need to talk about is, I want to be very open and transparent. We know that we need to adjust by about two to two point three million dollars. And if you talk to Delise, she's going to say, no, Kim, it's two point one to two point five. And I, that, we kind of arm wrestle that discussion. But no final decision can be made until things calm down in our federal government and our state adopts a budget. If you've been following this, the Senate proposed a budget, the House proposed a budget. And then the governor made a pretty strong statement about a week ago, give or take, that said, I'm not approving either one of them. Because we're not increasing. Taxes on these things or we're not increasing that type of revenue. Um, the session is supposed to be over April twenty eighth, twenty seventh, twenty eighth, twenty ninth, last week of April. And it doesn't get over until the budget is done. And so while we can predict. Um, we have webinars once a week with Chris Reichtel from O S P I and they give us. Um, some of these things may not be settled until they go through court and whatever. So. We have to, we cannot start too much work and guessing until we know what that is. An example is. If you remember our W A S D publications, their big three. Improve funding for special education, improve our M S O C. Remember, we always talked about insurance. And then, um, transportation, transportation solely off the, they, they quit talking about transportation. Um, that's mainly, I mean, it does impact us, don't get me wrong, but that's that district like Morton where they drive. Sixty-five miles into the mountains to pick up one child and there's no added. Funding for that. Um, special education, the rumor is in both of the proposals. It's not nearly what we're asking for, but there is a little bit of money there. Um. And so, and the M S O C is like. A one percent increase. It's not even enough to even begin to talk about our operational costs. And, and, I mean, we all feel it. I don't care if it's your home taxes or your home power bill or your fuel bill. I mean, we're all feeling it. And they're giving us like a one percent. Um, that doesn't even begin to tackle our increases. So it's hard for us to say to anybody who's listening. We need to cut blank dollars because we don't know what that number is going to be because we don't know what we're getting. The tool that Delise uses, they haven't even published. And they're not going to publish it probably for give or take five to ten days after it's done, but that puts us in May. I want to be really transparent also about. We've, I've received emails about C squad athletics. I've re, and by the way, I've had some great conversations with people. They've actually come in with, here's an idea, here's some ways, what about trying this? So I have to thank anybody who's listening. All those emails, they really do matter because this group sitting right here, we can't. Come up with every idea that there might be. So we want them to continue to come. Um. All areas in some way, shape or form are going to be impacted. Every single part. And even though I've said to some groups, well, we still have to run the bus route. So it, but it's going to impact. Other things. A field trip or, uh, which is transportation, right? Because the fuel costs and the, all of those pieces and the labor costs. It may not. We're not going, I, I, I say may, everybody hear me that, I may, but it may not cut a route. So it may not. Have a driver, but it may impact their overtime or their extra trips. Does that make sense? So every part of our district is going to feel security. Um, and then Deanna, I've had a long conversation about. And I'm, I'm, in case you come back and listen to this later. We did a big, when we ran our levy, some items on there was athletics and security. Ladies and gentlemen, we're not cutting athletics. That's not what we're doing. We're trying to right-size that so that everybody plays a part of it. We're not cutting security. It may look differently. We have secure vestibles. We have different things. So I don't want anybody to think we're taking. Program X and we're taking it out of what we're doing, right? But everything has to be right-sized. And I'm looking at each of you in the eye and say, you hired me to take good care of the district and that is my responsibility. And I have to make those decisions with obviously your support because you approve the budget. But you don't want me to bring a budget that has less than what our policy says in a fund balance. You want it to be better. But the biggest part is we have to educate our students. And some of the, and we don't even call them bells and whistles, but some of our. Extra pieces may have to adjust so that reading, writing and arithmetic are still the focus of our folk, is, are, is our main paramount duty, right? So I just want everybody, if you go back and listen to this together. I want everybody to understand we all have a part of this. Um, so that's it. Anything else that we've been talking about in the last couple of days?
Well, I would just say that, um, we really have, we've spent a lot of time working on it already and we are not. Anywhere close to done. Um, and at the same time, it's, it's challenging in that. Like for me, for state and federal programs, because that, if all of a sudden in two months, a state and federal, our state or federal programs cut. And we've already staffed it, then what? I mean, then that becomes an impact on the, the general fund if we don't have the program funds to cover it. So it's, it's a, it's the most crystal ballish I've ever really felt in budgeting. Like you've got to kind of. Hope you can make the right guest of it based on what your, your knowledge. Um, and we are going to, we're going to lose money in title one. Uh, we all lose money in lap. Part of that is enrollment. Part of that is our free introduced. Not our free introduced, but our poverty level in Prosser, not in the district, but in Prosser. Um, so you know, it's challenging. Our kids need everything. We want to do everything for our kids, but. We, there's definitely limits.
I think the one thing that we've tried, been very proud of in our area. In our district is we've worked towards reducing the gap. And that can be the gap in. Um, skin color and races, that could be our, our poverty levels, right, increasing between. And, and some of you who are mainly listening, this is the decrease in the gap between the haves and the have-nots. And that can be any, you can use any kind of spec. And that can be any, you can use any kind of spectrum. And this type of problems increase the gaps. Because the things that we're using to support to decrease the gaps are being taken from us. Okay, enough down on the bummer stuff, but, um, I'm gonna keep going. Uh, capital committee meeting is, um, April seventeenth. So we, you, you know, you, you have, you wish for something and then you have, it creates another problem. Well, now we have really green grass, but it's like a foot tall in some spots. So now we have to figure out how to get it mowed regularly, get it cleaned up and manage some weeds and some other pieces. So don't get me wrong, everybody's listening, but really half it's green, but now we have to figure out how the management, um, by the way, um, Andy and, um, his team, we've divided and conquered, we're making these teams, the irrigation, the, um, you approved the gentleman to work on our irrigation. It's amazing when you have the right people that's sitting at the table and what can happen. So things are really getting better. It's just kind of like anything. I don't know if you feel this at home. Sometimes in this, in May, you have to mow your lawn every four or five days because you put so much fertilizer and by the time of August, you can get to seven or ten days. And that's what we're experiencing right now. We still only have so many people. So I put a little joke on here. Who wants to get out their mower and come mow? Um, uh, and some people have, and so I'm, I'm joking, but I'm serious, right? Like, we, we know that it's a problem, but I guess it's better to be thick and tall and green than brown and short and no, so. Um, capital projects, uh, you heard Mr. Denny say that, um, oh, it was at the safety meeting. But the chiller is on the roof and is running. Um, so we've got, at the middle school, so we're super excited about that. Now we're in that limbo land. You happen in the fall and now it, you see, um, the Scrumville pillars, now we struggle with, we want the heat on in the morning and we want the air conditioning on in the afternoon and you can't turn the boiler on and the air conditioning on and it's kind of a a messy piece, but the chiller is here and we shouldn't have ninety degree rooms this year. Um, the vestibule, uh, household is now working, the badge access works. Um, we have some growing pains. Um, it's called a punch list item. There's some punch list, some of the metal on the backside got put in, it was tweaked, it had dent, or it just wasn't put in right, so they're refixing it. Um, I don't know if you've noticed, they've started some work out here and they've also been pressure, they're getting ready to pressure wash the whole building and painting the building. Everybody's asking, you just had a negative Nelly conversation about budget and here we are doing paint and whatever. Remember, we're talking different pockets of money. We have different things that we're doing with that. I don't want anybody to think that we're, missing. Uh, WASDA regional meeting, I'm very, always proud of this. We're doing our regional meeting here at the end of April. This is where school board directors come from our region and come in, we get, we're gonna do it right in here. Yeah. Nice opportunity and I think that's it. So I'm welcome for any questions or any comments. And if you're listening or you listen to this after the fact, if you have any questions or concerns, pick up the phone and call, ask me. I'm here. My phone number's posted everywhere it is. Ask, 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 or suggest, 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 because we can't think of them.
Thank you, Kim. Uh, any questions for Kim?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to board reports. Michelle?
Um, just a couple of things. So I don't think it's been well advertised yet, but the FCC LA club for the high school and the middle school is putting on a free Easter egg hunt this Saturday at nine o'clock. So that'll be at the HMS baseball field and they say it's from ages of infant to eleven. I, I don't know how infants hunt for eggs, but there will be a category for infants to two years old. Um, but it is free, nine o'clock. I encourage everyone to come, um, and just have some fun and support FCC LA. Also wanted to mention the Prosser PTO is hosting another family bingo and silent auction night here at the old high school on the eighteenth. I went last year, it was really fun. I bought, um, way too many things. I'm still trying to use them all before they expire. Um, but please go and encourage or support the PTO. I believe they're gonna use those funds to help support, um, STEM activities and field trips for the coming year. And then also just wanted to mention, I'm really excited that the sixth graders are going back to Camp Dudley for, um, a day trip at camp next week. And as much as I wanted to join as a chaperone, I was informed by my child that I wasn't welcome. So I hope they have fun. That's it.
Thanks, Michelle. Brian?
Uh, hope, uh, hope students and staff had a great spring break. Um, I did work the Rotary Track Meet a couple of years ago and then I wasn't asked back for some reason and I don't know why, but I did get the invite to come back this year, so hopefully I will, uh, be able to come volunteer there. It's a pretty, pretty amazing event, so, um, yeah, looking forward to that.
Hey, thanks, Brian. Lisa?
The track meet is all hands on deck. I'm sure that with an oversight, you're qualified. Uh, anybody with a heartbeat is qualified and it is heavily dependent on volunteers. Um, always a lot of fun and there's lots of Rotarians that give a lot of time and there's, uh, few that would tell you the history of the whole event if you have an opportunity to hear how it came about with the Prosser.
Thanks, Alisa. Um, I don't have anything. I think we're just on the downhill slide of, of school. You know, graduation's right around the corner, so here we go. Uh, with that, we have a regular board meeting, April twenty third, uh, right here in the boardroom at six PM. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.